Version of the meeting minutes by the end of the week.
Thank you, Council Franco. You're muted, Council Franco?
I don't have much to report. I just got home from a Fitch baseball ECC tournament game against Montville and Fitch won. So, um, life's been extremely busy with baseball lately. So that's all I have to report at the moment. Thank you.
Council Heath?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Council Bordlon?
Thank you. I attended the Fields Athletic Task Force Group. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Council Melendez?
Yes, thank you. I might have a bad connection. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, I am happy to report that Children First Groton was granted a thirty-five thousand dollar grant. It is the um, second year of this grant. So um, they're just excited to um, you know, move forward with their goals and this extra money. So, thank you.
Thank you for reporting out on that. That's good news. Very good news. Um, Councils of Perry.
I'm happy to report that I planted an apple tree in the yard today. I have another one and a cherry tree to go in, which I've held up so that I could be at the meeting. Otherwise, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Council Franco, did you have something else to add?
Um, I have a question for Mr. Burt, but I don't know if I should wait till other business or if I should do it now.
Um, do you have something that you wish to communicate to Mr. Burt? Or are you looking for a response? Because if you're looking for a response, we can wait till, go ahead, ask, just, let's do it.
I just wanted to let him know that I've seen a lot of people in our community asking about um, the Mystic Education Center, and they seem to have a lot of questions and about the education center development as well as the TIF agreement. And would it be possible to have a community meeting so that answers can be, um, the community can get answers to many of their questions?
I, yeah, I've just recently spoke with Mr. Reiner about this. Uh, we're, we're looking at, I want to see what some of the questions are out there. But we're definitely looking at that possibility. I, I anticipated something we can do.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, as far as communications, I attended the um, the monthly Groton Sale Foundation meeting, and things are progressing nicely as far as um, the interaction with EB and the work there and the vendors and possible volunteers who will be finishing up that project. The focus right now is on um, the fundraising process and what um, type of fundraising they're going to be doing. They are looking at temporarily putting a link up on um, the website. That would be a PayPal for people in the, in the meantime, to be donating to the Groton Sale Foundation. The work is continuing with the site plan, uh, with Kent Frost working on that as well. So um, things look like they're moving well, moving, moving forward in a good direction. Um, I had a meeting on Monday with um, the new site manager from Medtronic Mystic with Mr. Burt, um, Ms. Jones and Mr. Brock from Economic Development. Uh, the gentleman is new to the company, and he wished to reach out to us because they were going to be hiring in the future, and they were looking for some assistance connecting with the community. So Mr. Brock um, did a very nice job of um, acting as intermediary. He's going to make some introductions and um, put uh, Mr. Oliver in touch with the appropriate people in the community so that they can fill those positions. So you can watch for, for that. Um, I had a question from the public about the transfer station, a service that used to be offered, and Mr. Hanover answered it very well as far as um, payloading and mulch. So thank you very much for that. And we all received communication from Mr. Fitzgerald regarding coastal access. Approval of minutes, item four A, twenty twenty-one, three ninety-three, March twentieth and May eleventh minutes. Um, Council Parker, please.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of, I apologize, uh, March twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. So move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Zeperry. Any discussion on the minutes? Um, one second, please. Council Obree um, is with us now, and it is six forty-five. So we are at um, eight counselors. As of six forty-five, thank you, Council Obree. We are just, we just um, moved acceptance of the minutes, and there has been no discussion so far. I don't think I missed any hands on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Eagle one, Parker.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Parker, thank you very much. Okay, we are on to the new business, and we will be starting with item five A, twenty twenty-one through eighty-seven. And I believe we are on Council Franco, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the scheduling of a public hearing for July sixth, two thousand twenty-one for the resurfacing of Sandy Hollow Road. I so move.
Second, Heath.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heath. Mr. Burt, did you wish to speak to this? Or um?
We have Mr. Han over here. This is uh, he's doing uh, well, let him speak. We, we're just doing the regular paving, and it's required as part of our ordinance, being a scenic road to hold a public hearing.
Uh, yes, good evening, Council. Council's Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. Um, yeah, approved, you know, recently in the um, FYE twenty-two CIP where funds to um, as John mentioned, resurface the eastern portion of Sandy Hollow Road from High Street to Allen Street. And being that Sandy Hollow Road is a designated scenic road, um, the town ordinance does require the town council to hold a public hearing to determine if there's good cause to perform this work. Um, and paving is one of those uh, pieces of work that requires a uh, public hearing. So we are requesting that the council hold that public hearing on July sixth, um, and then determine if uh, we can go ahead and pave the road. There will be no widening or other improvements associated. We're just uh, basically replacing the asphalt surface to make it a smooth, smooth road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Does council have questions regarding the setting of the public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of scheduling the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Uh, we are on to twenty twenty-one, four zero two COVID nineteen vaccine awareness program. This was on page thirteen in your packet. Councilors of Perry, did you wish to um, discuss this item, please, since this was your idea?
I, I said some, I made some comments about it at one of our prior uh, council uh, call meetings. Uh, generally speaking, uh, we, we have this virus uh, reducing its effect on us at this time. The incidence is, is much lower than it had been. However, the virus survives in humans that have the infection. And it will propagate and it will mutate until it comes up with a uh, a uh, species that is uh, not susceptible to the vaccine. The best way to approach this would be to eliminate the virus from our population by everyone being vaccinated. It's not a matter for just the people being vaccinated, protecting themselves. It's a matter of protecting the rest of society. I think that we should be proactive in encouraging those who have not been vaccinated to get vaccinated. And we can do this a number of ways, but I have proposed that uh, we appoint a subcommittee to discuss options of being proactive in this regard, and then uh, have that subcommittee recommend to us a uh, a uh, an approach uh, that we could adopt from the council. Uh, it's one thing for us to all take interest in the statistics and ask for them to be delivered, but it doesn't do any good unless we do something with them. I think it's time for us to act. So that's why I, I asked that uh, that the council consider this on today's committee of the whole. I think there is some urgency because I, I think there still are people being infected, and we still have some very sick people and probably will have more deaths from this disease.
Thank you, Councilors of Perry. Um, I would just ask before we start discussion, Mr. Burt had some um, information about what we are already doing and what's available. So, Mr. Burt, would you like to just deliver that information to the whole council and to the public? And then once we are all aware of that, then we can continue discussion, and that way we know what's going on already and what is left to be done.
Sure, um, I haven't really gathered everything, but for one thing, every week we post out there numbers are, where to get their vaccines, where to get tested, that type of thing. I did however, speak with uh, Steve Mansfield about this uh, agenda item. He was supportive of anything that gets the word out there, like cards going, you know, mailings, that type of thing. He thought that was worthwhile to do. Um, everything helps. You never know, you can save a life doing that. Um, so I'm certainly supportive of that. But I think there's never too much you can do with uh, promoting vaccinations.
Could you just address the, the um, transportation issue?
Oh, sure.
You, you had discussed that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, in terms of one of the things mentioned for the referral is transportation. It was, it was, they mentioned Human Services, but it's actually the, the senior center that has a bus, or there are a couple buses. Um, I talked with Mark uh, Mark Barry, the director of Parks and Rec. They could do some limited transportations. Um, they can do, you know, it'd be limited to what they could do. They'd have to work around their schedules. Um, however, some other ideas is apparently Uber and Lyft are doing free um, rides. So we could promote that out there. We'd want to make sure those rides are going to last a while, but that's something we could promote. And Human Services does both bus tokens for certain things, so that's also something we could consider.
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said? Human Services does what?
Another, they give out bus tokens for various things. Um, not that they have a bunch extra, but it's something we could also think about doing.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else you wanted to add? And then I'm going to open it up to um, the other, the counselors who had comments.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Council Obree, you had your hand up. Did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, I apologize for this fact that somehow I can't get my picture up, but I'm sure you all know what I look like. Um, I want to uh, say that I think it's excellent that Joe has brought this up, and I'd like to see some cooperative spirit between some of our departments and um, in aiding with this. Um, you know, we, we have good transportation from the senior center. We need to get that out, that I'm sure that they would participate. Um, I'd even like to look into giving everybody a Lotto ticket that would come and get their shot. Uh, you know, a dollar if each time would be very little in, in, in the total amount. But I, again, I think if we could just have a little conversation between um, John and the departments as to what each one might like to be able to contribute and, and at our next meeting, review those things and really, really take Joe's advice and go out strongly to get those people to come and get their shots. Thank you.
Um, Council Heath?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as far as the um, Uber or Lyft goes, they have a limited distance that they'll, they'll let you travel. It's a, it's a set dollar amount. Um, I can't speak for what it is. Um, I know when I was at United, it was twenty-five dollars each way. Um, but that might be one consideration to think of is uh, you know, you give a free ride up to a certain distance. Uh, because if you're asking the senior center to ride their bus halfway across the state, that's, that's going to be probably prohibitive. But another thought that you could have is uh, the same time you send out the flyer, ask people to give a call in and volunteer to give rides. Uh, you know, neighbors helping neighbors.
Thank you. Any other counselors wish to speak to this? I, I would love to. Um, since someone else has their hand up at this point. I just want to thank Councilors of Perry for, for raising this issue. I support um, any efforts to encourage um, the vaccination process and to um, improve the public health in our community because it will help improve the overall quality of life for everyone and help our businesses get back to where they need to be as well. Um, I'm not sure the best way to handle this, if this is something that Mr. Burt feels that town staff could work on, or if uh, you would like a committee to be formed of counselors that would um, kind of compile the ideas and offer ideas. So um, I'll pause and ask for your response on that, please. Do, would you like a committee of counselors?
But it's entirely up to the council. I mean, we could put ideas together and, and present to the full council or to a subcommittee. It's entirely up to you guys.
Okay, so um, I, I think that um, anything we can do as a body um, would be useful. We have, we have a physician, we have a nurse um, on the council here. So um, the counselor, counselor, not to volunteer you, but Counselor Obree and Counselors of Perry are both medical professionals, and they, they could um, be of great use to us in um, deciding what would be appropriate action to take. And um, I, I would be supportive if there would, if the council would like to have a small committee to work on this and to brainstorm. I do support the idea of the cards being, being sent out to the households. Um, and Counselors of Perry had some good ideas on that. Um, but I think that would be useful as well, and just, just a contact, a point of contact for people if they have questions. Um, that is from, you know, people familiar to them from us, right? So I, I support fully um, the actions that Counselors of Perry is suggesting. Council Franco?
Thank you. Do we have a COVID committee of sorts that we put together for um, the community trying to bounce back from COVID?
We have the Long Term Recovery Committee.
Long Term Recovery. Would they, by any chance, take this up?
Well, the uh, the chairman of that committee is our mayor, so I will refer to her.
Would you like an answer right now?
No, I don't need an answer. I was just curious as to if that committee would be, would be taking up something of this nature, if that was under their purview. And um, would our, the funds that we're receiving, um, state, federal funding, would that be able to help cover the cost of this?
Well, there's no funding currently, but once they are, P dollars are received, certainly that could be something, certainly that would be an eligible use.
All right. Um, I am all in favor of trying to help our community get vaccinated, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it forward, Counselors Perry, and I yield my time.
So um, just in response, this is not something that the Long Term Recovery would um, be taking on, Long Term Recovery Committee. Long Term Recovery Committee was more um, as, as, as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but it was more focused on um, the economic impact and um, helping to make sure that the community was moving forward in that regard. This is more of a public health issue, and I would feel more comfortable with um, you know, our resident physician uh, working on this and um, other volunteers that would do this. Counselors of Perry, you wish to speak again?
Well, yes, I'd like to make a motion, if I may. I move that we appoint a three-member committee, a subcommittee from the council uh, to, one, draft a uh, a message that will be sent to all households in Groton, and two, to uh, uh, look into options with uh, uh, our town manager for uh, um, for transportation or other means of trying to encourage people to uh, to get their vaccinations.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know that we need a motion to do that. I think, I think um, if I, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I can appoint a committee. Oh, if it's the consensus of the council that you would like a committee, I can appoint three people to serve on the committee, unless you would like it to be a formal motion, Counselors of Perry. It's your choice.
I don't care so long as it gets done.
Right. So then I would, I would be happy just to appoint a committee if there's no objection from the council. Is there any objection from the council to me appointing a three-member committee? Okay, do I have volunteers to serve on a three-member committee?
Wait a minute, could I ask a few questions? I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Yes, all right.
So, Council Franco brought up a good point. If the money that's coming in, we did not budget for this and sending out, who is sending this information out with this come from town staff to do these cards? To send out, which department? Is this going to be under their budget line item? Or if we're using that money that's coming in from the government, are we setting money aside off to do that? Two, how, what? What list are we using to send out this information from? So is this going to be from Human Services or from another list? Because I'm trying to figure out how you guys are going to send this out to all households correctly. There might be some issues down the line. I'm just thinking outside the box here that people don't want this type of information sent to their home. And I understand where the concern is, and the other thing is, a lot of people, there's some family members, some families who cannot get the COVID vaccine because of the certain health issues. I've talked to several different people out in the community about it, and they, we've discussed this one-on-one, no names, I'm not saying anything. But I get where everyone's coming from about the vaccine, but not everybody can have the vaccine. Or which one, are we going to tell them, suggest which one they should do, or are we just going to point them in the direction of signing up? Because if that's the case, we could post that on our Facebook page.
Sounds like, it sounds like, Julia, you're volunteering to be on the committee.
No, I'm not.
Counselors of Perry, the, she still has time left, so Counselor Parker, you have, you can continue.
So I just want to make sure that where, where we're getting the list from. We're suggesting, we're not telling everyone that they have to do this, because that's my fear is that you start sending these cards out and say, you need to get your vaccine. And people are going to put up a big door and say no. So we may want to be very mindful of how we phrase it. And I understand Ledgerlight's involved, but Ledgerlight also can post something on their page about getting the vaccine. The governor's been doing it, so we need to be in coordination with everybody if this is the way we're going to go. Thank you.
I, I concur. I agree. Um, a lot of it is going to be in the way you're, the way you're saying things. Um, Council Obree, did you wish to speak for your second time?
Yeah, I was just going to say it, it, it wouldn't be that difficult. I'm quite sure if we were to ask Groton Utilities, if they might work with us on an announcement, and also the areas that are covered by the rest of Groton, it's covered by the other power company. So, and I, and I, I think uh, Council Park is correct. It should be done in a delicate manner, uh, just an invitation and information. But I, I'm quite sure Groton Utilities would not have a problem with putting it in with the bills that go out. They're pretty accommodating with something like that, and I would think that the other power company would be too.
I, if, if, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Council?
As far as how we get them out, the post office will do a mass mailing for you. You take your, you don't have to put any addresses on them. You have to pay a fee. I, I don't remember what it is, but when I was uh, running from uh, reelection, I considered doing it, but I was afraid it would put me over the top on expenditures, so I didn't. But it's not that expensive, and you just have your cards printed up with the message that you want delivered. Take it down to the post office, and they'll put one and tell them which, you could even say you only want it in uh, say uh, uh, a particular zone, a particular postal zone, so you only want to deliver to Mystic, and they'll do that. But we like to deliver it to the whole town of Groton, and they'll do that. Uh, it's not that expensive, and having the cards printed up isn't that expensive. I think we could do the, the informational part of this for twenty thousand dollars or less. Uh, and uh, I, I think, you know, for, considering the other things we've done in the past few years, I think this uh, is, is getting a, a big bang for the buck. Uh, as far as, it's not compulsory, so those who have reasons for not getting the vaccine certainly should not get it. But there are a large number of people out there that say, hey, I'm willing to take my chances. I don't want the vaccine. I don't like people poking things into me, uh, and that sort of thing. And I'd like to persuade those people that it's not just a chance they're taking for themselves, but it's a chance they're taking for their neighbors, their children, their, their grandchildren, uh, and all the people that come in contact with it. So I, I would like to persuade people that uh, this is too important to just sit on the sidelines for it. We have to be all together on it. So tha- that's all that my position is on, on this, is to try to get, to change some minds that are presently not disposed to having the, getting the shot. And I know some very intelligent people that are refusing to get the shot uh, for some not-so-intelligent reasons. Uh, but uh, I, I would like to keep telling people, you gotta do it. You really, I mean, it's so important. Uh, you can't turn your back on it. And uh, uh, I think as a council, we're supposed to be leaders in this town. Uh, let's lead.
Thank you, Counselors of Perry. I have Council Franco for a second time, and uh, Council Parker. Franco?
Thank you. I would um, I would like to suggest that maybe we partner up with either Yale um, Hospital or Ledgerlight and have them write all the medical issues. Because I just, although Counselor Superior is a doctor, I don't think it would be prudent for a town council to basically give medical advice to anybody. Um, and I don't think we're covered medically for that. Um, and maybe have Ledgerlight or Yale do all of that, and maybe we're the sponsor who pays for the mailing, but have it, have theirs, their information on there, like maybe where they're having their clinics, when they're having it, how to get in touch with them, how to sign up for it. Maybe they have transportation for these things, I don't know, but I would suggest maybe having it something that they produce, and maybe we pay for the distribution of it. I think that might be um, a bit wiser as a, so that the government itself is not actually telling you what to do, the town government. So, and I thank Council Parker for bringing up um, those very important points. Thank you.
Council Parker, for your second time?
Yes, just one more question. I know we had a census. Do we have approximately how many people are in the town of Groton? Are we targeting just adults? Because there's a certain age limit about the kids getting the vaccine. So anybody under the age of twelve and younger are not going to get it. So if we can get a firm number, if we can get more information on how much it's going to cost us before we say, go ahead and do something, I think we should double check and see how much money we're going to end up spending before we say yes. Thank you.
Okay, Council Boardlon, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Um, I think there's good and bad to both sides of this. I think it's great to put the information out. I think information has been out in mass quantities already. I know there was volunteers going door-to-door from the school system, knocking, um, encouraging. They've had, they've had uh, vaccine clinics there. Um, I'm getting stuff from Yale, Hartford Health, Ledgerlight Health District, um, already coming in. And I think it can be a bit of a slippery slope. Um, if you guys think that, you know, town leaders, meaning ourselves, are going to change the mind, um, of a few folks, then uh, and you think it's a financial burden of the town to do such. Um, but I agree with Council Parker that um, you know, we, we should, before moving forward, we should see exactly what we're up for, for costs, and before just blanket it, blanketly approving any of this. I think it should come back for the council. Um, but Yale New Haven Health, Hartford Health. those things are flying all over Facebook, all over websites, coming in the mail, attached to any bills. So, if you go to the doctor at all for a physical or anything at all, non-COVID-related, it's everywhere, it's coming in. Um, I don't know, um, you know, if our flyer, maybe it will change one person, and that's one life. Um, but I also think, you know, right now, there's some uncertainty for some folks, and, uh, you know, if their medical providers are not able to convince them, I, I just think it's kind of a, a rough area to, as counselors, you know, be putting information out there. Um, maybe a sponsorship, it's like Counselor Franco has suggested with, you know, one of the other companies already doing it. But I think we need more information first before moving forward. I think it's a great idea, and I think it's a great incentive to help the community. Thank you.
And, and that would be, um, just to recap, the idea of the committee is to answer all these questions that everybody has, so the committee would meet and come up with ideas, then bring it back to us. Um, Counselors of Perry, this would be your second time speaking, sir.
I, I'm just reminded of a story, uh, that hit the news, uh, a few years ago. Two families got together, they both had four children, and they got on board a sixty-foot sailboat and left, uh, Darien, Georgia, and sailed down around Florida and across the Gulf of Mexico and through the, the Panama Canal. Then they sailed up along the border of Mexico, uh, the Baja, and they were off of San Diego when they got into a storm. And the boat capsized and all of both families were in the water. They had managed to get a Mayday off before they, the boat, uh, went down. And the Coast Guard came out in a helicopter. And they were yelling up to the hook, the helicopter, they were being circled by sharks. And they were yelling up to the helicopter, please send, drop some shark repellent. And the Coast Guard, and the, and the helicopter said, no, no, we have to do a study first. After two of your children are eaten by sharks, then we'll know that you need shark repellent. Uh, I, I just would like to see us, uh, get off the dime and do something. Uh, you wanna study it, we can study it until next year. I, I don't know how many people will be eaten by the sharks in that time.
Okay, so then, um, I understand, I understand the concerns, and I think we've all heard the concerns, so whoever um, volunteers to serve on the committee has also heard the concerns, so please, um, take it in. Um, Counselor Melendez, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think if we're talking about whether or not we should have a subcommittee or not, I think just the level of discussion that we're having here shows that we, we, it, it'd be a good idea to have a subcommittee so that they can work out all of these, um, um, you know, all these issues there, so I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor for it.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon, for your second time?
Thank you. I think it should also come to the, um, other group that's already standing that's been dealing with this. It's not been just financials. Um, it has talked in there about, you know, access to vaccines have come up, and many other COVID-related things, um. My understanding of that is not just the financials of the town, it's also um, the access and well-being of, of, of the town as a whole. So, something like this would be great to come before them um, and, and discuss, and the interest, and maybe some information. If you guys decide to do a subcommittee, information on there could be generated to move forward to the subcommittee, but I do think it's something that should, you know, be brought to the floor there. Thank you.
So, do we have three volunteers to serve on said committee? Counselors of Perry, can I assume you're willing to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have two other counselors who are willing to participate in the subcommittee and explore these issues?
I heard Council Obray say she really wanted to do this.
Counselor Obray, you're muted, so fortunately, we didn't hear that response. But, are you, are you interested, Counselor Obray? She's trying to unmute.
Unmute, okay. Uh, I'll do what I can, but I gotta tell you, right now, I have very limited time, very, very limited time. And I'm still trying to straighten things out and get a meeting of the, uh, you know, the Rules Committee, and I'm not very successful at that, so.
Okay.
As, as allowed, I will, I will do that.
And is there, are there other counselors? Perhaps we can make four then, since Counselor Obray has limited time. I would be happy to work with Counselors of Perry on this. Is there another counselor? Anyone else who would like to participate?
Come on, Counselor Menzel, Manzel, sorry about that.
Okay, so right now, we have, um, Counselors of Perry, Obray and Granatowski that will serve on a committee, will explore some of these issues, will bring back the findings. Um, Counselors of Perry can report back the findings at another committee, committee of the whole meeting, and, um, the council can decide what they would like to do as far as this goes. If any counselors change their mind and decide that they have some time that they'd like to spare and, um, to help out with this and, um, offer their ideas, we are certainly, um, happy to have you aboard. All right, so Counselors of Perry will look for you to set up a meeting, and you could notify Counselor Obray and myself as to when you would like to meet, sir. Thank you very much. All right, we are on to item five C. And this is, um, Zero Paquonic Road, twenty twenty-one, three nine seven zero, Paquonic Road. Um, and this is, um, possible executive session, and Mr. Reiner is here, I believe, correct? Mr. Reiner, did you wanna give us a brief overview of what this item is before we make a motion for executive session, sir?
Sure, uh, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. Uh, this property is on Paquonic Road, it is called Zero Paquonic Road. It is the site of the old, um, it was an old gas station that the town did receive through a tax foreclosure. There were some, uh, environmental contamination on the property that the town had cleaned up. But it is still, uh, has some contamination issues on it. It is located right now next to the Massage Therapy, uh, School, or the, the former Massage Therapy School. And the town has been contacted by someone that is interested in leasing the property from the town. So, wants to talk that through with the council in executive session. We have received comments from the Town's Conservation Commission and our Economic Development Commission, both, uh, stating that they did not see a use for, uh, open space or recreation on the property, and that we should market the property.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Mr. Burt, did you wanna add anything before I make the motion for executive session?
No, nothing for me.
Okay, I hereby move that the members of the town council, Town Manager John Burt, Planning Director John Reiner, Assistant Planning Director Deb Jones, Economic Development Manager Paige Bronk, um, go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section one, two hundred six D, for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning the negotiations for the potential sale of Zero Paquonic Road. I so moved.
Okay.
I can.
Heed.
Moved by Granatowski and seconded by heed. All those in favor of going into executive session for stated purposes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, moved unanimously. We are eight counselors, uh, voting in favor. It is seven nineteen. Um, GMTV, we're gonna need you to, um, be back, because we have two other motions and then potential other business, so we stand, um, ready to begin as soon as GMTV cuts, uh, cuts the feed.
Bird, are you ready to go?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right. Hello, we are back.
This meeting is being recorded.
I don't know whose machine that was, it wasn't mine. Hello, everybody, it is now eight o'clock. We came out of executive session at seven fifty-four, took a six-minute recess, and we are back for item 2021-398. And this is Zero Flanders Road. And Mr. Reiner, would you like to introduce the site, or is this Mr. Bronk?
I can introduce the item, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Bronk.
Thank you.
So this property, Zero Flanders Road, is approximately seventeen, a little over seventeen acres, located on Flanders Road, just south of Route 95. And we have been approached by an individual looking to possibly purchase this property. This is a property that has been reviewed by our internal review, property review committee, recommending sale of the property. The economic development commission has recommended the sale of the property. The conservation commission did not recommend the sale of the property due to its approximately its location to some other properties that have not been developed that are zoned industrial. And something that we discovered out on the property during a site walk not too long ago is that someone has recently built a disc golf course on the property without permission of the town. I think that happened during the COVID-19 pandemic. We have had an appraisal on the property conducted, and we can talk to the council about that in executive session. This property is zoned industrial, and it is not located within the town's water resource protection district.
And Mr. Bronk, did you wish to add anything at this point, or should we make the motion?
No addition at this point in time, thank you.
Mr. Bird, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing.
Okay. I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt, planning director John Reiner, assistant planning director Deb Jones, economic development manager Paige Bronk, go into executive session pursuant to general statute, section one, two hundred and sixty-six D, for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning the negotiations for the potential sale of Zero Flanders Road. I so move.
Second.
Move by Granite County, second advisor Perry. All those in favor of going into executive session for stated purpose, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with, I believe we are still at eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight councilors, and it is eight oh three, and we are in executive session. And we will just give it a minute for GMTV and the recording.
The recording has stopped.
I'm ready.
Okay. All right. Hello, we are back.
This meeting is being recorded.
I don't know whose machine that was. It wasn't mine. Um, hello, everybody. It is now eight o'clock. We came out of executive session at seven fifty four, took a six minute recess and we are back for item twenty twenty one three ninety eight. And this is Zero Flanders Road. And, um, Mr. Reiner, would you like to introduce the site number? Is this Mr. Bronk?
Uh, I can introduce the item and I'll hand it over to Mr. Bronk.
Thank you.
Um, so this property, uh, Zero Flanders Road is approximately seventeen, a little over seventeen acres, uh, located on Flanders Road just south of Route ninety five. And we have been approached by, uh, an individual looking to possibly purchase this property. This is a property that has been reviewed by our internal review, property review committee, uh, recommending sale of the property. The Economic Development Commission has recommended the sale of the property. The Conservation Commission, uh, did not recommend the sale of the property due to its, uh, uh, approximately its location to some other properties that have not been developed that are zoned industrial. And something that we discovered out on the property during a site walk not too long ago is that, uh, someone has recently built a disc golf course on the property without permission of the town. Uh, I think that happened during the COVID nineteen pandemic. We have had an appraisal on the property conducted and we can talk to the council about that, uh, in executive session. This property is zoned, uh, industrial and it is not located within the town's water resource protection district.
And Mr. Bronk, did you wish to add anything at this point or should we make the motion?
Uh, no addition at this point in time. Thank you.
Mr. Bird, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt, planning director John Reiner, assistant planning director Jeb Jones, economic development manager Paige Bronk, go into executive session pursuant to general statute section one two hundred six D for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning the negotiations for the potential sale of Zero Flanders Road. I so move.
Second.
Yeah. Move by granted task second advisor Perry. All those in favor of going into executive session for stated purpose, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with, I believe we are still at eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight counselors. And it is eight oh three and we are in executive session and we will just give it a minute for GMTV and, um, the recording.
The recording has stopped.
Hello again, it is 8:41 and we are out of executive session on item 5C. And we are on, or that was item 5D rather, I apologize. Yes, we are on to correctly noted there, we are on to item 5, 2021, 3960 Riverview Avenue. And this is an executive session also. And Mr. Burt, were you going to be the one introducing this, or Mr. Hanover would be introducing this one?
I'll start, and if he's been involved in a little longer than me, he can join in if he has any further information. I did include in the agenda packet an aerial photo showing where historically the public parking is along, or has been along Riverview Avenue in Noyk. There's generally six spots there that you can see as you go more eastward, those get kind of shallow. There's a few good spots and a couple of iffy spots. Last year it came to our, a survey was doing work for new property owners across the street. And it was discovered that part of this property likely belonged to the property owner across the street rather than the town.
Excuse me, would you be able to screen share the photograph for the public, please?
I'd have to pull it up on the, if you give me a minute, I can.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to share a screen here. Can everybody see that?
Yes, thank you. I think that would be very helpful for everybody to see. Thank you so much.
Sure, as I was mentioning, this is Riverview Avenue in Noyk. It's kind of hard to see on this, but the traditional boundary for the parking area, you see a lot of its rocks, is sort of ish through here. Just a way of a background, this was a lobster hatchery with the only access being via the water, apparently. That was back in the 1920s. Over time, there was apparently not a great description in the first place for this property. The, oh, the, what was it? The, whatever the weather event, I don't know if it was a flood or what it was, 1938. Whatever storm there was knocked out a lot of the old monuments, so a lot of it was lost for where you would even tie the property into. The property went to the state and eventually the state transferred it to the town. But again, we never had good boundaries on it, or in a good legal description on it. So the surveyor doing work for a property across the house, the new owner across the street, the surveyor realized that a portion of this along the street, basically kind of through here, likely belonged to the property owner. We'd have more of the rocky part for the full coast here. And then internally, our surveyor, we have an on-staff surveyor in Public Works, he did his own research, did quite a bit of research, and found the same thing. Now, in the meantime, I want, of course, to make sure, so we have engaged a, had a title search done, it's just wrapping up. And they did not look at any of the earlier material, they wanted to do it entirely on their own, so they weren't influenced. And they also believe, they're wrapping it up now, but they also believe that that is correct. The boundary might be slightly different than the earlier survey, but basically it's the same. So everything is pointed so far to essentially this part's privately owned, this part's town-owned. So that's part of looking into, there has been an offer from the property owner to possibly do some land purchases, swaps to gain public parking here again. So that's part of, that's what we'll discuss in this executive session, is negotiations on that.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Is that all you wish to do as introduction? And if so, I will move the executive session motion.
I have to ask that he shows the next page as well.
So these, yeah, good idea. Sorry, I forgot that was in there. This yellow is what the town owns. And this, I guess you could say, orange is what the private property owner owns. Likely to. Greg, did you have anything that you needed to add? Did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered the basics.
Okay, so I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt and Public Works Director Greg Hanover go into executive session pursuant to general statute section 1206D for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease sale or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning negotiations for the potential purchase or sale of property at Zero Riverview Avenue. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of executive session for the state of reasons, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That was Council Board lawn?
Yep.
Seven in favor, one opposed. Any abstentions? Zero abstentions, so seven in favor, one opposed, board lawn, zero abstentions. So that motion passes. It is 8:47 and we are entering into executive session. And if you could just hold on, please, until GMTV breaks and the recording is paused, please.
Yeah, um, as I think much of the public, especially in knowing knows that the property we were discussing before going to executive session on River View Avenue and knowing has been traditionally public parking. However, it's come to our attention that part of it is likely owned privately. And that private owner has placed stones, boulders, blocking off the parking since that part is their, they're likely their property. So in the meantime, what we're doing is we're looking at all options, including we have been discussing options with the property owner. This is a priority for the town. And we hope to have public parking open back up as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Bert. We are on to item six, review of agenda items. I have nothing. Mr. Bert, do you have anything you wanted to go over at this point?
I do not.
So we are on to item seven, other business. Council Franco.
Thank you. I sent out a referral today to the council and eat by, by email and see if Mr. Bert. Um, as I would like to make a referral to change Tiff master plan agreement terms. As previously discussed by council and town staff, the terms of financial bonding would not ever be used, though the wording is still contained in the policy and master to master plan. I would like to remove all wording that refers to government financially bonding Tiff development projects for private entities. Um, our community has concerns about this terminology being included in the TIF. And if it's never going to be utilized, I would like it removed for the sake of our community. And I did get two counselors, um, to endorse my referral, both counselor heed and Melendez at this time. So I'd like to put that on a future cow agenda item. Thank you.
So I have only seen one response. Have they both come via email? Was I copied on the email?
They did both come by email and.
I, I did respond. I think I replied all just before the meeting.
Thank you. That's probably why I didn't see it. So then, um, in the language, um, you replied directly to Council Franco. So we have the correct language for, um, the agenda then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Board lawn, you have other business?
You, um, the referral that came from the RTM, um, I had sent out and trying to make it a referral item. They had questions about, um, proposal that, um, and I was just wondering, um, what do we plan to do with it or, or discuss that at all?
Um, did you receive sufficient council support for that?
I, I'm not able to track it if they send it just to you or to John or whoever. So I'm not sure if it, because we don't usually get the follow-up if, you know, it's received or not. But it hasn't been brought up that we even really received it.
Right. I haven't, I don't believe I've received anything.
We never got the thing that from the.
The council did. The council did. I'll, I'll get it. Some evidence had sent it to the council, right?
That's not what I meant. I meant I didn't receive any other council support.
Okay. So it was brought to everybody and there's not enough support to bring it forward to discuss it. That as of right now is what you're saying.
I don't believe I have anything in the mail. I could be wrong. I could double check, but I don't believe and I'm not hearing from any counselors that they are in support at this moment. If you are, you are welcome to reply and let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, seeing no other hands, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by the Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Obree. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously at nine thirty-nine PM. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night and.
Good night.